At 7:00 PM. This again is a virtual WebEx meeting. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. I'll ask the village clerk to call. Roll call, please.
Trustee Baum. Trustee Hudson. Trustee Kaminsky.
Here.
Hello, Trustee Miller?
It appears he's here. He just is muted or his audio isn't working.
Working. Trustee Myers. Trustee Peeper.
Here.
Trustee Wing.
Here.
Trustee Zabel.
Here.
President Walter.
Here.
For him as present. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Next item on the agenda is President's Report. The only thing I have to report tonight is it's been brought to my attention that this week, the week of May 3 through May 9, is Municipal Clerks Week, and this is our chance to recognize and show our appreciation for the hard work and dedication the village clerk and the clerk department team members perform every day to support the village board, the village staff, and the village residents of Germantown. Thank you for your excellent work. Your department performs week after week, and this is a way for us to show our appreciation as an official calling of the Municipal Clerks Week of May 3 through May 9. So congratulations, Deanna, to you and your team, and thank you for all the wonderful work you do for us.
Recognition. Thank you. You have a good team.
That's all I have to announce at this time on President's Report. So we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is appointments.
Yes, here I make the motion to approve item number five.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion to approve the appointments as listed on tonight's agenda under Section Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll do a roll call vote approval of the appointment.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Kaminsky.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you. Trustee Peeper.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee, and department reports, and we'll start with the committee reports and committee chairs with Trustee Zabel.
General Government and Finance will meet on the 20th at 7:00 PM, hopefully at Village Hall, but we may be out of webcast. And again, I'd like to echo the President's approval of the clerk's department. They have done an excellent job.
Thank you for that. Next department trustee Kaminsky.
Public Works will be meeting virtually tomorrow night, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM.
All right. Thank you. And then, Trustee Miller.
Public Safety met tonight at 6:00 PM, and our next meeting will be June 1, Monday, June 1 at 6:00 PM.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to bring forward for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee, or department reports? There is nothing else. We can go to the next item, which is citizen input and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. If there was anybody that has joined the WebEx or phoned in that would like to come forward for citizen input or public appearance, I would ask that you, of course, have made contact with Michelle so that she can present and turn on your microphones so that if you would say before this board you had that opportunity, all I would ask is you state your name and your address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to come forward for citizen input or public appearance? All right. I'm assuming there are no one coming, so we'll go on to the next item, which is consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through C.
Second.
See Zabel's second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to approve consent agenda items A through C? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Kamin... Trustee Zabel.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Peeper.
Aye.
Trustee Wing.
Aye.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is old business. We have listed the village administrator report on COVID-19, so I'll turn the meeting over to our village administrator, Steve Kreckel. Steve?
Excuse me, can I interrupt? I'm sorry to interrupt, but it appears that the mics on Channel 25 and the voice volumes aren't coming through.
All right. I think we have our issue completed here, so the... I'll go back to the enforcement activities. Apologize for the technical difficulties we're having here. Still getting some bumps. But our police department is now out actively seeking violations of the Safer at Home Order. They are... ...reached out. The businesses and individuals involved have voluntarily complied with what they're being asked to do. So I think that's, you know, shows the community orientation and the community nature of Germantown, and it's a positive thing that our police department hasn't issued any citations or made any arrests or anything of that nature of folks related to the Safer at Home Order. That was one of the things I wanted to make, you know, clear in this presentation, both for the village board and for the public, since we do get questions along those lines on occasion. There are three major reopening plans that are under discussion that directly affect us. One is the Badger Bounce Back, which is Governor Evers' proposal for reopening the state. Next, we have the Washington County Blueprint for Reopening, which builds upon whatever the state does and provides additional detail and feedback, both for the village and other municipalities, as well as for residents and businesses. And then finally, I've got some information about the Wisconsin Manufacturer and Commerce Back to Business Plan, which is being taken under consideration by leadership at the state level as a possibility or elements of it may be incorporated into how we eventually end up reopening the state. One of the questions that we often get is under the Badger Bounce Back plan, when do we reopen? When do things start reopening? The governor's plan, and this is an item of some controversy, doesn't include specific dates, but rather it sets four benchmarks that are in place that the state health officials believe are important before we start reopening for full activities. And one of those is that there's a downward trajectory of cases within a 14-day period, and we are not there yet. There have been actually an increase in the number of cases statewide in the last few days. The State Health Department has also indicated that they will also be taking into consideration the number of tests that are being administered and the percentage of positives that come out of those tests when they're looking at that particular benchmark. Second benchmark the state has mentioned is having testing capacity for 12,000 cases per day, and they're looking for that, that in case or when other outbreaks do occur, like for example, some of the meat processing plants in Brown County or in Milwaukee County, that they have enough capacity to test all individuals who came in contact for it with COVID-19. And currently, that level of capacity is not there, although there has been significant progress. As of last Friday, the state reported they had capacity of 10,500 test cases per day, so they are closing in on that. The state's also mentioned that they believe that they should have 1,000 additional tracing staff in place so that, again, you know, when there are outbreaks, when other individuals get COVID-19, that a tracing individual is able to contact those people who do test positive within 24 hours and trace other individuals who may have been exposed to COVID-19 and refer them to testing to try to cut off any additional outbreaks before they occur. That is not yet in place, but the state is, it did report last week that they were making significant progress towards that benchmark. And then the final benchmark was ensuring that the hospital systems have enough capacity, both in terms of equipment, of beds, of PPE and other supplies and materials. That is, that metric has not yet been achieved yet either. There still are some shortages in various parts of the state, but the state has reported they are making progress in that area as well. So once there's progress made, more progress made in those benchmarks, what would the bounce back or the opening look like? And the state has described three phases. The first phase would allow for gatherings of up to 10 people. Restaurants would be allowed to open with social distancing standards in place. Some additional retail restrictions would be removed, and childcare operations would resume. Under Phase 2, gatherings of up to 50 people would be allowed. Restaurants would resume full operations. Bars would be allowed to reopen with social distancing, and all other nonessential businesses would be allowed to reopen with social distancing. And then in Phase 3, basically all businesses and activities would resume, and minimal protective and preventative measures would be in place to protect the public. So the next plan related to reopening that I think is relevant to the village of Germantown is the Washington County Blueprint for Reopening, and this is a document that was released by the Washington County a couple of weeks ago. They have been updating it once or twice every week as additional information comes forward. They wanted to clarify, and one of the things they've added since it was initially released is that this is a plan that would be put in place when the Safer at Home Order was lifted. I think that one of the concerns of the county when they developed this document was that there would not be adequate direction for local governments, for businesses, for residents in terms of what was allowable, how things would be reopened once that Safer at Home Order was lifted, whether that was done through a judicial process or a legislative process or through action by the governor. So they developed this document, the Blueprint for Reopening, to provide additional detail. The Washington County document also contains benchmarks for reopening, and there are four that are similar to the state. The first one, which is in bold, meaning that it's not yet been achieved in Washington County, is 14 days of downward trend in positive cases as a percentage of total tests and a decrease in hospitalization, so it's similar too, but a little bit different from the state. In Washington County, we do have hospital capacity and operations are back to new normal. Testing remains an issue, and one of the benchmarks is that there's enough testing capacity that everyone who needs a test can get a test. I think we're getting close to that, but not there yet. And then finally, capacity to do contact tracing on everyone who tests positive within 24 to 48 hours, and that's something the Washington Ozaki County Health Department believes that they have adequate resources in place to do that within those two counties. So there's some specific guidance that's also included in the Washington County Blueprint for Reopening. I've taken a few highlights here just to help provide information. Under retail, when we begin the process of reopening, the Washington County plan would limit the number of patrons in a store at one time based upon the size of the store, maintaining physical distancing. And they would also ask, but not require, businesses to maintain a log of individuals who enter to help with the tracing process, that if someone does test positive, that it makes it easier to determine who else came in contact with that individual and may need to be tested as well. There was some information for barbers and salons, tattoo parlors. I know that's an area where I've been getting phone calls from some of the village businesses. They would be allowed to reopen, keeping clients at least six feet apart and maintaining social distancing. Social gatherings would be limited to no more than 10 people. Bars, restaurants, coffee shops, businesses of that type would be allowed to reopen with no more than 10 people per table, with tables six feet apart. Individuals seated at a bar would need to be six feet apart. Larger venues like churches, movie theaters could operate at 25% capacity while maintaining social distancing. And then there was a recommendation in the Washington County Blueprint for Festivals, Fairs, and Concerts, events with large numbers of people, and really requesting that the organizers of those events take a hard look and consider either postponing or canceling. The next reopening plan is the Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce Back to Business Plan. This is a proposal that was intended to allow for reopening from the Safer at Home Order at the state level. This is a data-driven computer algorithm that is designed to give specific guidance for safely reopening businesses by categorizing them as either low risk, moderate risk, or substantial risk, and then providing specific direction to those businesses on the steps that they should take in order to safely reopen. The factors that go into that algorithm to determine the risk level are the interactive concentration for the business sector, so in other words, how many people are involved in that particular type of business, how close of contact do they have, and how much movement is there among people. The infection rate of the county of operation, the population density of the county of operation, and then finally, the healthcare capacity as a percentage of utilization in the county of operation. So those factors would be put together in an algorithm that would classify then businesses as low risk, moderate risk, and substantial risk, and then give them specific guidelines for how they can safely reopen. So knowing that, looking at these three plans, and I think it's fairly safe to say that over the next month, that there will be reopening, and it's when and exactly how that happens, how quickly, how slowly, whether it all happens at one time, whether it happens in various regions of the state ahead of others, whether some businesses are allowed to open before others, those are all unanswered questions, at least I don't have the answers to those questions. But I think that it's fairly safe to say that there will be, that businesses will be reopening, organizations will be reopening over the course of the month. And so we've been, as a village staff, trying to work on how can we help businesses and organizations with the reopening process? So first of all, we're working on communication. We've been reaching out to businesses of different types. There's a lot of them, so it's only a small percentage that we've been able to make contact with so far, but we're trying to reach out and find out what their questions or concerns are, asking them, is there anything that the village can do to help? We're also, I'm also trying to provide the type of information that I just went through at the village board here tonight to businesses, so they may have a little bit better idea of what the next few weeks have in store and what kind of challenges they may face when they do start reopening. Another way that we may be able to help going forward is with temporary use permits. I think particularly with things like restaurants that I know are really anxious to reopen, that, you know, are struggling financially and need to reopen as quickly as possible. Well, as you can see, all of the plans that are under consideration right now have some sort of limits on capacity and require additional space, which is going to reduce the number of customers that the businesses can serve on their regular footprint. So in conversations that we've been having with restaurants, we've been talking to them about whether or not they might want to look at temporary use permits to expand their outdoor seating areas, maybe into parking lots or other areas of their property that may work for that purpose. We're also talking with them about adjustments to their liquor licenses that may be necessary so that they're able to serve alcohol on those extended portions of their premises. So that's an example of what we're looking at, just trying to find ways of helping businesses so that when they're trying to adapt to some of the restrictions that are likely going to be in place, that we're, the village as a government is a help and not a hindrance. There are some other financial things that we are looking at. One is the state legislature, in a recent meeting, passed Act 185, which does allow for the deferral of property tax penalties and interest as a result of the closures that have taken place. The process to adopt that is that the county jurisdiction has to adopt it first, and then municipalities within the county can determine whether or not they would like to adopt that. And Washington County's executive board did consider that at their meeting last week and recommended approval unanimously, so it would be going to the full Washington County Board at their next meeting, and at that point, if it's something the village board wishes to consider, we could bring that forward. We've also been exploring the utilization of the business revolving loan pool that we have. That's a, for those of you who may not be familiar with it, it's a small loan program that we have in cooperation with First Bank that makes available loans of up to $25,000 for some purposes, for some businesses. We're looking into that to see if that may help. For example, if a restaurant needs to purchase additional patio furniture in order to expand their outside seating when they reopen, that may be a possibility. We may be able to utilize that loan fund to help them. We're exploring that and seeing if that may be helpful. We're also trying to take advantage of opportunities for advocacy at the state level, both in terms of conversations that have come up over the past, you know, month to six weeks with our state representatives, participating a couple of times a week with league of municipalities, phone calls, and conference calls, and giving them input. There have been some other opportunities to try to provide that type of input to the state legislators and governor, trying to get things opened up as quickly as possible. And then finally, I think it's important that as we go through this process, that we try to do it in a way that builds public confidence and safety. You know, while I always take poll numbers that I see with a grain of salt, you know, there have been multiple polls done, none locally in Germantown, but nationally, regionally, and statewide, that show that the majority of residents are very concerned about safety and are, there's going to be some hesitancy to, you know, to go back to restaurants, to go to social functions, to go to sporting events, et cetera. And I think that as we go through the process of working with businesses to reopen and getting... And I think that as we go through the process of working with businesses to reopen and getting information out and communicating it, and making sure that people feel confident that we're doing it in a way that's orderly and safe, is going to help those businesses in the long run, and they'll get their customers back more quickly. I also wanted to touch base briefly tonight on financial impacts on the village. This does affect us, our bottom line at the village, just like it does businesses. There are four areas in particular where we see some significant revenue losses that we'll need to take into account and I think make some budgetary adjustments for. Our hotel tax that goes to the general fund, it's very difficult with this, as with any of these numbers, to give you a very solid projection for the end of the year. I have no idea how many people will be staying in hotels in Germantown or anywhere else in, you know, November, December, October, September. It could be back to normal, or we could be in a situation where, you know, not many people are traveling. So that's difficult to predict, but I think it's likely that we're going to have a shortfall in that revenue line item of somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000. I think it's also likely, again, very difficult to predict the final numbers, but likely that we'll see a reduction in our inspection and permit fees. And the best estimate that we have at this point is, you know, a $100,000 to $200,000 loss in revenue there. A recreation program is another area where we're likely to see some financial impacts. We've had to cancel a significant number of our programs. We're, obviously, we're seeing a much reduced registration for summer programs right now as people are uncertain what's going to be able to be provided. We're trying to identify ways that we can adapt to this as best we can. There's also, with the recreation program, when a class isn't held, we don't bring in revenue, there are also some expenses that go away as part of that class. Overall, at this point, we're estimating that there's a net loss in revenue of somewhere in the $250,000 to $350,000 range. And then there are several other smaller revenues, things like earnings on investments, et cetera, where we could see a revenue loss of anywhere from $25,000 to $75,000. So those revenue losses could amount to a total of between $475,000 and $925,000. That's a pretty big chunk. It's also a very wide range. And again, I just want to emphasize that these are very preliminary, and they are subject to a lot of changes as we go throughout the course of the year. We have taken some initial action and talked about an approach at a department head and staff level. First of all, I think it's important to start early with actions to try to bring the budget back into balance. And we can adjust up or down as necessary, but the earlier we start, the less drastic the action will be that we have to take in order to bring the budget back into balance. I think that there are some things that when we put together a plan, that I'll be bringing to the Village Board, some short-term actions that I think may make sense for 2020. I think we'll also need to start looking at longer-term actions as far as 2021 goes. Some of the, hopefully, the rebound in the economy will be as sudden and as quick as the decline was, but in all likelihood, will be some long-term effects that will affect the village budget. There were some initial steps that we took last week, and I emailed this out to all of the trustees. We're, you know, putting a hold on all nonessential supply and material and services purchases. And we're going through the list of all of our equipment purchases, maintenance projects, things that we could potentially defer or cancel for this year if necessary. And I've asked all the department heads to really take a hard look at any overtime that is being used right now. Obviously, if there's an emergency or there's a critical function and we need overtime to do that, we're going to continue, but we're trying to keep as tight a handle as possible on the overtime. We're also looking at some additional items. There are several vacant positions in the village staff that we're holding open right now, and we may do so for a portion of the year to help close a budgetary gap. And we're also going to be looking into potential furloughs for some village employees. You may have noticed that Washington County announced last week that they're implementing furloughs for some of their village or county employees, and some other municipalities are going that path as well. I have been meeting with department heads and the finance director, obviously, to start to develop a plan. And our goal is to bring back some specific items to the Village Board at the next meeting on May 18th. With that, that was a lot of information. That's more than I usually talk during a Village Board meeting, but I do have, just want to take a moment if there are any questions or any clarification or any other pieces of additional information people were looking for.
I do appreciate all the work that went into your presentation, Steve. I think you covered a lot of ground, and there was a lot of information. I like the idea that you're gathering information not only from the state, but at the county level, and also through the WMC as well as to what they're looking to do to help roll out or to start business back up. The only thing that bothers me about any of those is there's really not any firm guidelines that are in place in regards to certain percentages of or condition of the area versus the population, because I think each different area of the state is, can maybe open up at different times depending on how many people are up there or around there and what kind of businesses are operating within that. What I also don't like about any of the plans that I've seen so far is that there is no regard for the own people's common sense. I think you said in a couple of statements, people are kind of not willing to go out right away into restaurants, are not really ready to go full force and participate in group gatherings or go where there's a lot of people. But when I start seeing restrictions on what churches can do and how many people they can have, and what small businesses can do, and how many people they can have, it starts to remove that common sense and it starts to bring down a government overview of, this is what we think is right, and this is what we think is going to make you safe, rather than people's own common sense and what they think is best for them.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I understand that Hartford more or less opened up already this week or last week. Is that correct?
Hartford and the village attorney may be able to answer that question in more detail than I can, but Hartford did pass a resolution, and I believe that it indicated that they would not be enforcing the Safer-at-Home order from Governor Evers. And I did, I have gotten some calls related to that from businesses, wondering if, you know, what the village's stance was. You know, and there certainly is a lot of frustration, and there certainly is an economic need to open things up, and I certainly understand the businesses wanting to do that. My concern with what Hartford did is that it doesn't make opening up legal. It doesn't change the governor's order. It simply states that the village or the city of Hartford is not going to enforce it. Another, that order still could be enforced by other law enforcement agencies, it could be enforced by the state. And the businesses that do open up, I think there were two in Hartford that I saw in the media that opened up, two of their businesses. And, you know, one of the questions I asked a business here in Germantown was whether or not they knew if their, you know, business liability insurance policy, for example, would cover them if they opened up, you know, while the Safer-at-Home order was in place. So Hartford did do that. I'm not sure exactly what the legal effects of it were. It did get a lot of publicity, but, and I don't think that, other than the two businesses that I heard about on Friday, I don't think that many businesses have been opening up as a result.
Steve Dennis here. I was going to echo the same thing. There are not many businesses that actually are open in Hartford. Most of them are still staying closed at this time. I think they're kind of playing a wait-and-see kind of game.
I'll add that, contrarily, I went up to Cedarburg this weekend, and there were numerous businesses open in Cedarburg. And people were walking the streets, going in and out of the shops, grabbing food from a restaurant, sitting on a street bench, and eating their meal on a street bench. So there was a lot of activity up there in Cedarburg.
Any other questions in regards to the information that Steve presented on COVID-19?
Yeah, Trustee Wing. I would just like to add, similarly, what Terry said about Hartford. The business owners I'm talking to, and we know all these plans, the state plan to reopen, the Washington County plan, the manufacturers' plan, talk to these, you talk about these plans, there's nothing established. They're just people, you know, dreaming up things. The restaurants and bars I talk to tell me, what about the Hartford plan? What about the Hartford plan? Well, they hear, we have a mayor in Hartford that comes forward and says, we are not overtly going to enforce the stay-at-home law. He also states, we are allowing the freedom of the people to make the decisions for their businesses themselves. That means that they don't have to open, or if they decide as a business, they can open. Likewise, you as a customer. If you don't feel safe going to a business, stay home. It'll make more room for me. Because frankly, I have no problem going out right now, and I'm a part of the movement that believes in herd immunity, and I think we're making the problem worse by not having more activity. My opinion. Steve, you had said that if there's an orderly fashion to opening these businesses and government gets involved, because there are people that are scared. I agree with you, there's people that are scared. There's people that are scared out of their minds because of the media. But if we have this orderly fashion and government comes in and helps, this is going to help the businesses get their customers back. That's the one thing you said that I just totally disagree with. That's typical government thought, that we're going to help you get business, we're going to help you get more business than before. Here, I'm the government, let me help you out. I reject that totally. And I think we should be leaning towards comments based on the Hartford mayor's statements.
No other questions or comments? Village Attorney.
The only thing I would add is, as we look at, you know, Hartford opens up, and Cedarburg's got a lot of activity, and Lake Geneva was packed this weekend, and you're going to see those types of things in the news all over the place. The thing to remember is that for these communities that choose, like Hartford, to effectively not enforce the governor's order, although if you certainly, if you read their plan, it says that they're not actually doing that, that they, you know, in fact, talk about how they're duty-bound to enforce all laws and everything else. But nonetheless, one of the things that I caution all of our communities about is the fact that within the statutes governing these emergency declarations is a provision that says that if the local government does not enforce the orders that are otherwise issued, and the state has to come in and enforce that, that they can charge the cost of doing that back to the local municipality. And so while there is not much of an attempt to do that at this point, I do think the state is taking a little bit of a wait-and-see type of an approach at this point. I do think that if we start to see a lot of individuals, you know, cases spiking because of these places that are opening up a little bit more, that you're going to see the state starting to take a more active role in those types of circumstances with potentially charging the cost back to the local municipalities. Now, obviously, we'll see what happens. As Steve noted, we do have a hearing with the Supreme Court tomorrow, on the first of the two cases. We may get a decision tomorrow, we may not. It's hard to predict these things sometimes. You know, we don't know what the result of that is going to be. We also know that the governor and the leadership of the legislature apparently met today, and they may come up with a comprehensive plan that both sides can live with, that may impose some restrictions on us as well that we might not like. But certainly, if it's both the legislature and the governor's office saying that this is what we're looking at, you know, you're going to see the state take a little bit more of a hard-line approach on those enforcement-type things. So while we do worry about, you know, our businesses, and we want to make sure that we're acting appropriately, just remember that some of these, you know, drastic steps that have been taken with really the intent, in a lot of cases, just to make a headline, you know, may end up causing more problems than good for that community in the long run. Remains to be seen, obviously.
To what capacity could the state actually, I guess, enforce actions? Like if businesses in Germantown did open up, and the police here did not enforce anything, what could exactly the state enforce upon the village of Germantown?
Well, certainly, I think their first step would be that they'd look to the county to say, hey, county, you need to step in and be involved. To the extent that the county wouldn't get involved, you would then see the State Patrol coming in and taking over some of those responsibilities and doing the enforcement that they would need to do. Certainly, the Attorney General's Office has the ability to enforce and otherwise commence lawsuits and prosecute cases, and they certainly could be used for that purpose. Again, do I see that happening? Probably not. But, you know, certainly if things get much worse, especially in communities that are taking a lax approach to dealing with the concerns, we may start seeing a little bit more of that.
I do echo some of Trustee Wing's sentiment in regards to government taking control and telling us when and how it needs to be done, because it's not going to happen as fast as any of the businesses are going to want it to happen, and it's not going to put trust back into the people for the common sense of how they want to participate back into any of these activities as they start to open up. So I do, as my personal opinion, I have an issue with that government oversight. I'm not looking to place any of the business owners that are within our village at any risk in regards to their insurance liability or their licenses, whether they be state, county, or local, provided. But I do trust those business owners to know what's best for them or what's best for their business at the time of what makes sense for them to start offering full services again. What we did hear as part of Steve's presentation is that our own police force is not actively researching or searching out any of those activities or trying to actively search out people that are gathering together and try to shut it down. They're more or less reacting to some complaints. And if Chief Snow is still with us, maybe he can let us know on what that involves and, you know, what are we seeing right now on a regular basis as part of what the police department is going on calls to.
Yeah, I think for the most part, it's been fairly consistent throughout the order. It's people being confused about what they can do. The most probably egregious one was a bar that, the complaint, it was alleged that people were actually going inside the tavern, sitting down and eating food at the bar. Our officers did not, they talked to the bar owner and didn't think that there was enough evidence to follow through with that. So the bar owner basically said that that was not happening. So it's just been us getting in compliance. I guess I will go out on the record and say that, you know, where our intent is to gain compliance and in good conscience, I also must say that we have no intent to violate the order. You know, if it's bound to be constitutional, you know, we are certainly bound to. bound to follow through and comply with the order. And at this point, if we can do that with, you know, warnings, that's exactly what we intend to do and that has worked to this point, you know, our concern is as this moves forward, that that's going to become more difficult, you know, and certainly as we see more communities kind of bucking it. But as of right now, we have very successful gained compliance, but, you know, we are duty-bound to comply with that order at this point as well.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. I guess as things get warmer and as people start to get out in the warm weather, you're going to see more of that envelope being pushed. Now, when I went, after we had a dedication and a groundbreaking for Dinsfield Park on Friday, and I kind of went up and down Main Street a little bit to see what was happening there for activity and saw a fair amount of business and people sitting outside and taking orders on the outside and doing curbside type of service. So our businesses are adapting to what the conditions are currently, but of course, they want to have more opportunity to have more sales, you know, as things get warmer. And Steve did touch on some of that for what we can do personally is to open up that outside venue, to loosen up some of the restrictions of, not the restrictions, but some of the liquor licensing to what that outside area can be and how it can be serviced, so that some of those people that come to there and want to participate in that restaurant feel safe in being far enough away from everyone that, you know, that has that concern. So a lot of our businesses are adapting to that oversight as it's currently being imposed upon us. I'm not looking to make the bold move of Hartford. I know Mr. Maholik very well, I have a high regard and a high respect for him, but I am not ready as a village president to say that we will hold no regard or will we enforce any part of that. I, again, trust our leaders to know what's right and at what level to do it at, and it seems based on what Chief Snow has said, we're reacting to it correctly. I am interested to see what will happen in the next day or so and what the result of that is in regards to opening up more businesses. But my fear is it's going to not go fast enough. Government never moves fast enough to what has to react for the situation. So that's where I hope, at the local level, we can fill in and react to that a little bit quicker in regards to helping people operate within a little bit outside of the parameters of what we normally feel is acceptable, and opening up some of those licenses and some of those outdoor areas and see what we can do to help people survive. Because that's what it's going to be coming down to, people surviving as part of their small business and surviving as a business in itself. Now, the village too needs to look at what we can do to save money, and as part of Steve's presentation, he showed where some of the revenue shortfalls are and what we're doing to react to that. And that's important, that we're looking at that now and not reacting to it, you know, as it starts to show a little bit later in the year. Some of you were on the board in 2008, when the recession went through, and we quickly reacted to that by basically slashing the department by a quarter. We basically took a quarter of staff and laid them off to help save some of those costs. I think Steve has laid out a good plan of how we can lay it out and how we can cover it, but we also need to keep our thumb on it to make sure that it starts to get within those projections and doesn't get beyond that so that we are in shortfall. Now, lucky, luckily for us, we've planned for this. And part of that plan is, over the years, we have built up our rainy day fund, and we've built it up to a percentage that's larger, that's needed. We've talked about a lot of plans of what that money can be used for and how it can be used in the future, but it really was saved for a situation like this, for a rainy day, for an emergency. This, to me, falls into emergency. So we need to look at ways of how the village board on how we can stop some of those gaps and what portion of that we may want to use to help fill some of that shortfall as we go forward and as some of those costs become more clear and more realized within the projections that we currently have. Other questions? Comments?
Yeah, I got a question. Steve, on the Phase 1, 2, and 3 bounce-back plans, did they talk about how many weeks between Phase 1? Is Phase 1 one week? Is it four weeks? Do we know?
It is not time-driven, it's benchmark-driven. So, and that is one of the areas of frustration that some people have, is that it's not clear whether, you know, how long it would take to go from one phase to the next to the next. But it's based on continued, you know, downward trajectory in the number of cases. It's based on, you know, getting additional testing capacity, hospital capacity back online, and getting the tracing capacity online. So, you know, my guess would be, once the Phase 1 takes place, if there's no major outbreaks or there's no backsliding in terms of number of cases, we would go relatively quickly into Phase 2. So, but there's not a specific number of weeks or days that it would take to go from one phase to the next.
I have a little bit of a trouble with number of cases, but I'd rather deal with percentages or percentage of increase, because as we know, there's more testing is going to be held, we're going to see more cases. That's just going to be a result of additional testing. I wish we could look at it in a percentage of increase against the populace or a percentage of increase against those that may have already had it and are now, you know, through it. We always seem to add that number to the number of cases and we never take off those that recover. And it just becomes a running number of more, 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 rather than based against the balance of the whole. I'd rather see it based against the balance of the whole. It makes more sense for me as a percentage than just an increase in cases. There's going to be an increase in cases because we're doing more testing.
And just to point out, in the recent conversations with the League of Municipalities and the State Department of Health Services, they did indicate that they were going to be taking that into consideration, that would be a factor in it as well. And I think maybe as the village attorney said, that as they're having conversations and as the tools are getting better for them to use, that you may see some more things like that to refine the measures and address the concerns that you mentioned.
Could you give us some information on what you know about his number of cases in the county and within Germantown and what you've seen within the last couple of weeks? Chief Delane?
As of today, we had 22 cases in Germantown, and the cases in the county have gone up. However, like you stated, Mr. President, the number in the updates that we get every day do not remove the people who have either been deceased from the COVID virus or have recovered. We, as a department, have no way of knowing that. All we know is, since this incident started through today, we have 22 cases and four deceased.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Further questions? Comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead. And then I'll go back to Trustee Wing. Trustee Zabel.
My question is, I agree with you on helping the businesses and the temporary use, but I hope that we would waive the fees and maybe waive some of the ideals that they have to go in front of Planning Commission or whatever, to get everything approved for different, or planning to, public safety, that we should hopefully do it administratively and waive the fees for the temporary use permits.
Are you looking to do it all at staff level?
Yes.
Okay. What committee? Well, we have to have, I think, there's a village board, village attorney, does a village board have to decide to do that as a whole, or can that be just, because that be, how could we do that? What would be the best route to take it so that we could have that set up for those that would come forward and start that procedure?
Well, there's two approaches that that could be done. Obviously, it's not on the agenda this evening, so nothing we can do this evening. But option one would be, we bring it back to the village board even as soon as the next meeting. That can go through a committee if there's a desire to do that. It probably at a minimum needs to go through Plan Commission because they, it's a change to zoning code at the end of the day, and so they probably would have to do that if we're looking at, you know, some sort of formal change. The other option that exists and something that we're going to talk a little bit about in our final item of business this evening, is the use of emergency proclamations to modify or change, you know, kind of the existing rules. We're seeing a number of our communities that are doing that. In fact, the mayor in Mecklenburg just today issued a proclamation that changed the regulations on signs to allow businesses that are operating on curbside-only basis to have more signage than otherwise allowed, to identify phone numbers that they can be reached at and hours, and additional signs within the parking lot to identify, here's spot number one and spot number two, those types of things. And that's a method that we can do that as well, which then would come back to village board as a confirmation or not of that proclamation as well. So kind of two ways we could do that.
I think we've already seen some explosion of signage throughout the village. I know that there's been some along the Pick and Save commercial area, there's been some along County Line. I think Jimmy John's has got like a running signage of 10 or more that run all along their frontage of where they are on County Line Road and on Mecklenburg Road in regards to their hours, their number, what you can do, how you can get there, you know, just all 10 blanketed. And I'm sure we're not out there enforcing it, in fact, some of them, some of the signage is in the right of way, and I still see them there today. So, you know, some of that has loosened automatically, but I think it should be done in an official manner so that everybody understands that, you know, for the short term, it's something that could be acceptable and used as to help promote not only the hours, but the services that you're providing for your business. All right, I don't see, is Director Retschloff on, or Emily, just, are you representing that department tonight? Associate Press Ant. Is she on mute? Is she just calling in? I see her listed in the number of people participating, but I'm just wondering if there's something we can get on the Plan Commission, because next Plan Commission meeting is next Monday. So if this must go or should go through the Plan Commission, I think we should be actively putting it on the next agenda. And if Emily isn't listening or if Jeff's not on board, if we could pass that along?
I can make sure. I would appreciate it. I can make sure to pass that along to Director Retschloff and add that, I'll make sure it's added to the Plan Commission meeting.
Further questions or comments? Trustee Wing?
I pretty much picked up on what I wanted to talk about, just fast-tracking the outside premise extensions. We know it's a process. I had a bar contact me today, and they just thinks, by the time it comes through that, say the governor says you can have 50% of your tables, they want to set up a tent right away. They want tables outside. And to do that, they need the outside premise extension, the notices, the safety meetings. So if there's just a way, we can fast-track that, same thing Art Zabel said. Secondly, businesses are allowed to sell alcohol as long as it's closed and in a can. And some of these businesses, they have to walk into their parking lot to serve it. They need the outside premise extension extended into the parking lot to give them the opportunity to do curbside delivery of alcohol. So this is another issue that I think we should be working on with our bars and restaurants. I agree. I mean, you've seen advertising not only for Cinco de Mayo tomorrow, but I know that places where near I work, they advertise pretty much what they call an old-fashioned kit. And the way they call it a kit is in one container, they have the ingredients, in the other container, they have like the soda or the alcohol. And until you put it together, it's not an old-fashioned, so they're not really selling a drink for you to go, they're selling a kit for you to make wherever you feel you should be making it. And that, again, is up to the personal choice of the person that's purchasing it, of what, you know, what risks they want to take within their car, and hopefully not, or wait till they get home and enjoy that purchase then, which would be preferred. But you see more and more of that, and I think whatever we can do to help promote, not promote the sales of it, but to promote business so that they can look for other opportunities to gain business, I think we need to do that as a village. And I would hope with the village attorney's oversight, we can do it properly and not in a way that only puts the village at more risk or our police department at, you know, the possibility of more calls, but that actually helps the business and streamlines it so that they can get those opportunities quicker without having to go through that normal step-by-step process that could almost take a month and a half to two months. I think that's too long, we need to speed that up.
We will continue working on that issue as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything else on this topic? Give everybody another minute or so?
Again, as I stated, I do have a great respect and I do admire the mayor of Hartford, Mr. Maholik, but I am not ready to make that forward of an announcement. I think that what we're doing and the way we're trying to go forward for business is a good way, and at the same time, doesn't put not only the village at risk, but doesn't put the business owner at risk. But I'm very interested to see what the state and the county is going to do and how they're going to help things happen a little bit faster. Anytime government's involved, it takes longer, and I really don't want to stretch this out into fall and fourth quarter. I think we really need to start looking at trying to get businesses fully ramped up by summer, summer season. A lot of businesses are made or broken by what they can achieve and gain in business through that summer season. Some are very tourist-driven, but others just base their year on the activity of people being out and enjoying the outside weather. And if we can't allow that in a safe way or in a common sense way, we're going to lose a lot of our good businesses that really need that and count on that to help make it through the year. I was happy to see, for a while, Steins Garden was closed, and when other businesses were able to sell garden items like Menards and Fleet Farm, and even some grocery stores selling bark and gas stations selling bark and whatever, Steins was closed. Didn't seem fair, didn't seem right. It probably would have broken that business if they weren't able to open up and get some of that spring gardening sales that they really count on in order to make their year. And I don't know if they'll still survive, and I hope they do, because I think it is a local, state-only type of a business in Wisconsin, but it just kind of shows that imbalance of government saying, you can, you can't, you can work, you can't work, you can have business, you can't have business. And that's where I start to have issue with it, with that oversight. We still need to get back to common sense and count on the people that have it will use it and do it to what's best and what makes sense for them and how they best feel safe in operating going forward. Will things be different? I believe so. I think a lot of businesses will change, but those that are morphing and doing a lot of things that are working for them now, like the curbside and such, and trying to recondition their business to what the state of affairs is now, I think will be successful. If we can help them do that and streamline that process to help get them there, I think we've also done them a great service. Any other questions? Comments?
All right, then we'll go to new business. Starting with new business item A, Resolution 37-2020 to rescind a portion of the 2019 real property taxes.
Trustee Zabel will put the motion on the floor to approve?
Second. Trustee Bong.
Motion made at second. Trustee Zabel, does this come through GGF?
It did not, but the letters that went out with it basically proves the fact that somebody made them out there, put in the wrong number as part of the values for the housing, so they were actually taxed the wrong amount, so we're giving people the money that they deserve.
Okay. Director Rath, do you have anything to add in regards to this new business item?
We'll all, wait, unmute.
You're there.
Am I muted?
Yeah, you're there.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll also be doing a chargeback to the other taxing authorities. This is a legitimate, palpable error, so we will be sending that to the schools for their reimbursement, so this entire $2,200 is not fully our cost.
Was this just a random error for a few or one, or is this something that everybody
Was this just a random error for a few or one? Or is this something that everybody in the Village of Germantown should start looking at their property tax bill and make sure that it works out well to the math?
It seems as it was an error in the way they valued an outside building, thinking it was connected to the house, which extended the house rather than being a separate structure. So it was just an error in the way we're looking at an outside structure.
So it's more of a one-time, one option, one property rather than not across the board of several different properties that are like that?
That is true. It was a singular issue and it was due to a specific item on a property and how it was evaluated.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that motion to approve? No other discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Peiper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item on the new business is item B, Resolution 38-2020 extending the declared public health emergency in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 38-2020 as presented.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
A second, Rick Miller.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on that motion? And just for reference and just to kind of review, Administrator Kreckel, can you tell us again what this just is involving?
This, the emergency declaration, number one, and it may be of assistance. And we don't have the final instructions from FEMA yet for reimbursement for some expenses. This process may be different than prior emergency responses and I've been a part of, but it may be helpful in recovering some expenses that we've incurred because of the emergency. So that's one purpose for having the extension. The second is that it does enact the emergency management system for the village, which allows the chief executive, the village president, to take action if necessary, if the village board is unable to act in a timely manner. So let's say that there was a Supreme Court decision tomorrow that required the village to take some action. The village president would be authorized to do that on behalf of the village board until the village board was able to convene and take action. And then the third thing that the resolution does is it authorizes us to meet online as we are right now during the duration of the emergency order. And if I missed anything, I'm going to guess the village attorney will jump in and cover it for me.
I don't have anything to add, although I would just note that what this doesn't do is address any of the things that we were discussing not that long ago in terms of when are we going to reopen, you know, any of those types of things. This is just how we locally are operating our government and the need to do so efficiently. It doesn't have anything to do with quarantining anybody or anything along those lines.
Okay.
Are we allowed to start having meetings back in village hall? Or we have to keep this going until the 7th of July?
Why the 7th?
That's the date that's on here.
So the answer to that is, is that as restrictions are released, as guidance is updated from the CDC as we move along, we will look to get back to in-person as quickly as possible. I know that I've heard some folks say that they don't mind these things that much. I'm not a fan for a whole host of reasons. And so I think you'll see us try to get back to in-person meetings as quickly as we can, taking into account all of the guidance that we get from the state and from the county.
Okay, further discussion?
I have a question.
Trustee Zabel?
Does this, since there's no timeframe on it, does this allow us to open up village hall before the 7th if we choose to do it instead of having it closed?
I mean, it doesn't specifically say one way or the other. An easy way to address that, if it, you know, if we get to that point and we're looking to do it, will be we could just do it as a proclamation to change the rules again and just ratify that proclamation after the fact. So there's ways to address that, but the order itself doesn't mandate that we use these types of meetings until the 7th. It just authorizes us to do that up until that point.
Is there any reason, what was the reason July 7th was put into it and not June 30th or June 15th or any of the other days? Is there something?
I wanted to tie it to another village board meeting so that we didn't end up in a circumstance where we were going to have, just like we are kind of right now, where we've got technically a little bit of time left on an existing order. But, you know, we didn't want to necessarily let that lapse for FEMA funding and all the other purposes. And so we brought it to you early. So I just picked a date that tried to tie it to a board meeting to allow us to review that contemporaneously with the expiration.
So if we were to change it to June 15th, which would be another board meeting, there wouldn't be a big issue with it? Because we could always just change it or extend it at that point?
Yeah, certainly you could do that. It was just done with the idea that the 15th, I did think about it. It just seemed like that was kind of quick and recognizing that, you know, we may have need for some of the facets of this emergency proclamation for periods beyond the time in which we might otherwise, you know, have businesses reopen. We might be back meeting in person, but we may be still expending a lot of dollars for John and the fire department as they are trying to acquire PPE and that kind of stuff. And so we just thought that we'd err on the side of being too long with the understanding that we can always cut it short just to give us that protection.
What is the opinion of the board to stay the 7th or maybe move it to the 16th of June, the Tuesday after the June meeting?
This is Terry. I think we should just go along with our attorney's recommendation because we can, this is a moving, breathing thing, what's going on. It could change dramatically in a week or two, certainly, but let's wait and see what happens and shorten it and bring it back to the 16th. I mean, it's not like we don't want to meet in person. This just gives us a leeway in case it is extended longer, these issues. I would go along with the attorney's recommendation.
But this also helps to make federal monies available, whether it be through FEMA or through some sort of loan process for small business, right? Or for lost wages or any of that, correct?
Correct.
So to shorten it and from the way, you know, we know how long it takes us to do something, imagine we all know how long it takes the federal government to do something. So to go probably a month from now, a lot of those things will still probably still be processing and not realized or just starting that process once they receive application and start going through the procedures of what it takes to get to the next step. If someone wants to entertain a motion to amend, they are free to do so.
That is Rick Miller. I agree. I mean, there is wording in there that we can revoke it early. So why wouldn't, why would we do that? You know, let's just leave it the way it is. And if we're so inclined and want to revoke it early, we can do that.
Okay. Further discussion? Further discussion? Give you a second. We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Peiper?
Aye.
Trustee Wing?
Aye.
Trustee Zabel?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes care of all items under new business. It takes care of all items on tonight's agenda. Before we adjourn, the next regular village board meeting will be on Monday, May 18th at 7:00 PM. And we also have next Monday, a Plan Commission meeting that starts at 6:30. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for watching. And for those that participated in the WebEx, thank you for participating. Have a good night and we'll see you soon. Good night.
Good night, everyone.